We'll go ahead and call tonight's-
...to the regular state council meeting to order. And for tonight's invocation, we've got Pastor Jerry Thorpe of the Faith Community Center. Pastor?
Dear God and we Father, we thank you for all the blessings you've given our community, for keeping your hand upon us, and I pray, Lord, that you will be here in this meeting tonight, giving our leaders wisdom for every decision that they make, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Larry Bud.
Here.
Sean Burdle.
Here.
Ernie Dortchinez.
Here.
Rob Heatherling.
Here.
Bruce Jones.
Present.
Ray Coontz.
Here.
Martin Voda.
Here.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Okay, the minutes we'll be approving will be the minutes of the public hearing held June 16th, 2014, minutes of the regular meeting held June 16th, 2014, minutes of the cemetery board of managers meeting held June 17th, 2014, minutes of the finance committee meeting held June 19th, 2014, minutes of the ordinance committee meeting held June 19th, 2014, and minutes of the street and sewer committee meeting held June 26th, 2014. Entertained a motion to approve those minutes. Allman Burdle.
Second.
Second Allman Walters. Discussion or comment? Hearing done, roll call.
Ernie Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Okay, the minutes we'll be approving will be the minutes of the public hearing held June 16th, 2014, minutes of the regular meeting held June 16th, 2014, minutes of the cemetery board of managers meeting held June 17th, 2014, minutes of the finance committee meeting held June 19th, 2014, minutes of the ordinance committee meeting held June 19th, 2014, and minutes of the street and sewer committee meeting held June 26th, 2014. Entertained a motion to approve those minutes. Allman Burdle.
Second.
Second Allman Walters. Discussion or comment? Hearing done, roll call.
Ernie Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdle.
Yes.
Ernie Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdle.
Yes.
Ernie Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Okay, and next we have Officer Aaron Ryman.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of a police officer according to the best of your will?
I do.
Okay, moving on, we have a resolution regarding an easement agreement with James A. Paul and Cynthia J. Brandt. Entertain a motion?
I'd like to make that motion.
Heatherling?
The second.
Second.
Second Allman Burdle. Discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdle.
Yes.
Ernie Dortchinez.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Another resolution, this is the easement agreement with John H. Harris.
I'll make that motion.
Second Allman Voda. Discussion or comment? Hearing done, roll call.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdle.
Yes.
Ernie Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdle.
Yes.
Ernie Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Sean Burdle.
Yes.
Ernie Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Motion passes seven in favor with one abstention. Okay, now we have an ordinance amended section five dash four dash one dash two, disregarding fighting in public.
So move.
Second.
Jones, who's the second? Allman Voda?
Yes.
Discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdle.
Same.
Ernie Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes seven in favor with one abstention. Okay, now we have an ordinance amended section five dash four dash one dash two, disregarding fighting in public.
So move.
Second.
Jones, who's the second? Allman Voda?
Yes.
Discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdle.
Yes.
Ernie Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdle.
Yes.
Ernie Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Motion passes-
Mayor, you vote on this, too.
Mayor votes yes. Motion passes nine to zero. Okay, we've got the planning commission's recommendation. Mr. Hauser, please address the council.
Thank you, Your Honor. Members of Board of Alderman, planning and zoning commission recommend meeting began June 16th, I believe, this evening, and discuss the report, water, embedded soils, permission report that came in from the city of town by conservation. And based on that, I'll make a commentary, make a recommendation, actually, I'd like to make a recommendation to you, a further caution, make a recommendation to you to approve the variance on a partial drainage from 50 feet to 30 feet that's along a flyblock accidents. Correct. Yes.
Someone like to make a motion, accept that?
Second.
Burdle, second by Allman Dortchinez. Discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdle.
Yes.
Ernie Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdle.
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero. Okay, moving on, we have a resolution regarding an easement agreement with James A. Paul and Cynthia J. Brandt. Entertain a motion?
I'd like to make that motion.
Heatherling?
The second.
Second Allman Burdle. Discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Sean Burdle.
Yes.
Ernie Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
No one agrees with the plan of zoning commission, shall I read you?
Thank you, Mr. Hauser.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on down the agenda, we next have a motion to bid and/or advertise for a heavy equipment operator position at Oak Hill Cemetery.
I'd like to make that motion with comment.
Second.
Second Allman Burdle. Go ahead with the comment, Allman. Heatherling?
This becomes necessary because of a recent retardment at the cemetery.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Ernie Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdle.
Yes.
Ernie Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdle.
Yes.
Ernie Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdle.
Yes.
Ernie Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdle.
Yes.
Ernie Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdle.
Yes.
Ernie Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdle.
Yes.
Ernie Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdle.
Yes.
Ernie Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdle.
Yes.
Ernie Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdle.
Yes.
Ernie Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
No.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Okay, we've got two new police officers, and I'd like to ask Brandon Fox to please come forward, and I'd ask City Clerk Pam Beebabe to please step forward and swear the new officer in.
Do you solemnly swear that you support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of a police officer according to the best of your will?
I will.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I guess I got the last one.
Thank you. Thank you.
Officer, may I go?
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, and next we have Officer Aaron Ryman.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of a police officer according to the best of your will?
I do.
No comment required.
Traditionally, they get a round of applause.
Okay, moving on, we have a resolution regarding an easement agreement with James A. Paul and Cynthia J. Brandt. Entertain a motion?
I'd like to make that motion.
Heatherling?
The second.
Second Allman Burdle. Discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdle.
Yes.
Ernie Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdle.
Yes.
Ernie Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdle.
Yes.
Ernie Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
No.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes six to two.
Okay, and then also make a motion to approve the 500,000, it's 50,000 for each, the first and second quarter of 2014, from the general fund to the water fund for repayment of the water fund loan.
Second Allman Burdle.
Discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdle.
Yes.
Ernie Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Do we need to do a motion for the library budget?
Yeah, just to forward it to the-
Motion to forward FY 2014 to 2015 library budget to the city treasury for other refinements?
Second Allman Coontz. Obviously, that's been done, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
Okay, and then I do these motions here for tonight for the appropriations and the budget.
Okay.
Okay, a motion to recommend to approve the fiscal year 2000, from 5-1, 2014 to 4-30, 2015 budget in the amount of $20,872,899.
Make that form a motion. Okay, get a second on that from somebody?
Second.
Allman Voda? Discussion or comment? Hearing done, roll call.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdle.
Yes.
Ernie Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdle.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Next, we have a motion to bid or advertise for a heavy equipment operator position for the street department.
I'd like to make that motion with comment.
Okay, second.
Second Allman.
Allman Walters, go ahead with the comment.
And this position becomes, or this becomes necessary because of resignation at the street department.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdle.
Yes.
Ernie Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Also, a motion to allow the city clerk's office to prepare the appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year 2014 to 2015 in the amount of $42,777,900. And that the document be available for public inspection at the city clerk's office beginning July 11, 2014, and that a public hearing will be set for 6:45 p.m. on Monday, July 21st, 2014.
Second Allman Burdle. Discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Sean Burdle.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdle.
Yes.
Ernie Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Also, make a motion to donate $500 to the Taylorville High School Building Trades Class. This is for the picnic tables found at the lake.
Second.
Second Allman Burdle. Discussion or comment? Allman Coontz.
I can go with this, Your Honor. I understand the dynamics of what was going on. I just want the reminder of all the men that all this type of stuff needs to be brought up with the committee before any promises are made to anybody, and then to the full
We do not know yet what Mr. Laker, or what his subcontractor, CAM, is willing to do. I spoke with CAM's, Mr. Metzger's attorney today on the phone. And despite, I mean, if you remember, we reported before that Mr. Laker thought, and Mr. Miracle thought, that that firm had been dissolved. But the attorney reported to me today, the corporation has not been dissolved, but the business has essentially been shut down, but Mr. Metzger is still holding his engineering license. So, as of this moment, I don't know what authority, if any, Mr. Miracle has to be negotiating on behalf of that agency. So I will be sending the same email to that attorney tomorrow. He promised he would get with Mr. Metzger and see what we can do. I said, the bottom line is, I need to know from you folks, what number you're willing to settle for to give us a release, get this project shut down, let's go on down the road. This is the latest. I think the numbers, if I'm adding up, are over nineteen thousand. If you remember the initial agreement, that months ago, that Mr. Miracle on behalf of CAM and Mr. Laker here, on behalf of himself, or his firm, the documents were drafted that he was wanting an additional thirty-five thousand and some change, and CAM was going to ask for sixteen thousand seventy-six, and then they'd taken their shot at our fifty grand. And we drafted documents to, everybody sign it, let them try and take a shot at it, and then come back and we'll try to negotiate what, if anything, we're willing to pay over above it. We've taken the position all along that the agreement that the city signed indicated that you, the contractor, must do, perform this contract in accordance with all Illinois EPA regulations and rules. EPA is fencing with them and saying, you didn't do that. And that's why we're not approving all these dollars. So we have a legitimate dispute, I believe, with Mr. Laker. So we're going to give him this, we're going to, I'll send it to Mr. Miracle, he's requested it, and to Mr. Metzger's attorney. We'll see what the reply is, and then you folks can make a decision, and I'll be happy to give you my recommendations as we move forward. I know there's a pending interest request out there, and I think if the topic comes up, I think we're at this point now that let's sell everything and just postpone making any further payments until we get some kind of a resolution finally and move forward. So if you want to have any questions about that.
Alderman Heavely.
What's been distributed tonight, is it up to us to accept this, or Mr. Laker to accept this?
Well, both, because, I'm not asking for reaction on that tonight. Mr. Laker first has to say, he's okay with these dollars, all right? And if he's not okay, what is the magic number that he's willing to settle this dispute for? Then we come to you, and you guys decide whether or not you want to, for the negotiator, stick with these numbers. Whatever deal we have, there will be action required because the EPA attorney is asking us to do some corrective action budgets and submit some things, and also complete the work.
And one other question.
Sure.
If this was to be accepted, would we then be eligible to get our letter of no further remediation?
Yeah, if you look at paragraph three of this email, as I read it, and as I confirmed it with the attorney today, it says, once, it's believed that once this asphalt and fence are installed, the site should be eligible for an NFR, no further action type letter.
Well, it says eligible for. I'm asking, would we get it?
I'm reading that to mean that we would get it.
Okay.
I wasn't at the meeting, but that's what my indication was. And Mr. Melanie Jarvis was not there either. She was reporting this. And if you see on the bottom, it says, written request is required prior to disclosure of the information. I told her I was going to bring this tonight, hand it out as a public document, provide it to the press, which I have, and to everybody else, and she was okay with that. I mean, it is what it is, we just see where we go from here, folks, so.
Any other questions for the city attorney? Okay, thank you. Moving on to mayor updates, just a couple of quick things here. This Saturday, coming Saturday, they're going to have a dedication ceremony for the Christian County Farmers Memorial. Obviously, agriculture has played a, played and continues to play a huge part in the counties' and the cities' economics. So farmers and their families and all those involved in our local agriculture deserve to be recognized for their contributions, and they're going to do that Saturday. And I think that'll look nice up there where they have it. We had a great Fourth of July parade and fireworks, everything seemed to go well despite the concerns, but I think everything worked out well, and the weather certainly cooperated, so thankful for that. And finally, I believe that just about everyone is now aware of the wonderful five thousand dollar donation that was sent by a former foreign exchange student. I received that in the mail probably six weeks ago and found it about a week ago. But it was a wonderful thing, the letter was great, the local press has done a good job covering that story. All I want to do is put it on tonight so that we have a document in our minutes that his intent with that was to have that be used in some scholarship form. So I will be handing that check over to the superintendent, Greg Firstinow, you know, for the school to use it, and that was the intent of the man making the donation. So I just wanted that documented in the minutes tonight, so. That's all I've got, unless anyone had any questions, comments? Move on to committee reports. Discussions under motions to approve, adopt, and/or deny, and/or table, and/or amend, and or refer to an appropriate committee, in whole or in part, the matters regarding the following subject matters discussed at the committee level. Let me start out with finance committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. A motion to accept property and equipment insurance, the general liability and auto coverage, pollution liability and storage tank, environmental impairment through insurance through KRM, Division of Diamond Brothers, at a cost of two hundred eighteen thousand six hundred and seventy-six, and accept a malicious fidelity bond effective eight one fourteen for three-year prepaid term of rent sixty-five, make that in form of a motion.
Okay, you have a second on that?
Second.
Alderman Boda, discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heverly.
No.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Also make a motion to donate five hundred dollars to the Taylorville High School Building Trades Class. This is for the picnic tables found at the lake.
Second, Alderman Bertle, discussion or comment? Alderman Coons.
I can go with this, Your Honor. I understand the dynamics of what was going on. I just want to remind her, Beau Alderman, that all this type of stuff needs to be brought up with the committee before any promises are made to anybody, and then to the full council, and I really appreciate that, thank you.
I think that's why I was here tonight, so. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
No.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heverly.
No.